Good evening and welcome to the Marquette City Commission Meeting for Monday, July 30th, 2012. Could you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. City Clerk, could you please call roll?
Yes, Your Honor, Mayor Protam de Pietro.
Here.
Commissioner Neme.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
Commissioner St. Ange.
Here.
Commissioner Snyder.
Here.
Commissioner Stonehouse.
Here.
And Mayor Kivela.
Here. All right, Commissioners, any changes to the agenda? Commissioner Ryan?
I would like to move that we add a brief discussion of the issue with E. coli on the city beaches.
Okay. I've got a motion in support, so we'll add that as item 12. And Commissioner Snyder?
I'd also like to add a subject for discussion about a city artist residence program.
Okay.
I'll second that, Your Honor.
All right. Any other changes to the agenda? That'll be item 13. Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve?
I move the agenda be approved as amended.
Thank you. Do we have support?
Support.
Commissioner Snyder supports. All in favor, say yes.
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 Opposed? All right, motion carries. Announcements, we've got a bunch of volunteer boards and committees with openings still. Arts and Culture Advisory Committee, Investment Advisory Board, Local Officers Compensation Commission, Marquette Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, the Marquette Housing Commission, Parks and Rec Advisory Board, Planning Commission, the Regional Rec Authority Business Plan Ad Hoc Committee, and the Sister City Advisory Committee. So if you have any interest in that, please get ahold of a Commissioner or someone from the City Manager's office. And then also, although it's not entirely too late, there is a session running right now from seven to eight o'clock at the Peter White Public Library. Dr. Robert Lorenzer and his wife Peggy recently returned from Pakistan, working for the State Department, and they're giving kind of a program on their trip and their experiences there. So if there's anyone out watching that wants to go catch that, I saw part of it, and it's very, very interesting. So that's all I've got for announcements. We're going to move into our agenda, and first up, we've got a presentation by the Superior Watershed Partnership, and Natasha Koss is here. Welcome, Natasha.
Thank you. As you know, the Superior Watershed Partnership is responsible for the implementation of the Better Buildings for Michigan program for the city, and I'm here just to give you a quick and down and dirty update on how it's going and our progress. We wrapped up the South Marquette program in May. You may recall that a presentation from Eric Steeman when he was here announcing that Marquette was one of the top performing communities in the state, and we were the top performing non-entitlement community, doing the most home assessments of any other non-entitlement community in the state. So we were pretty proud of that. We also facilitated two signature solar installations in the city, one of which was on the cover of the Mining Journal a few months back, and so we're pretty excited about that, making solar energy affordable for Marquette residents. In over and all, the South Marquette program did really well. We are very happy with it, and we're excited to get started in the north, which is what we started in June. We moved the program to the north, offering the incentives to residents north of U.S. Highway 41. This phase of the program differs slightly from the south program in that the co-pay, the customer co-pay or the homeowner co-pay went up $25 to make it $50. The financing incentives were slightly different in that there is a $500 instant rebate for homeowners who are seeing a 15% energy savings or more. And then there's two loan opportunities. The 0% loan is a two-year loan, and then there's a 4.99% for 10 years, and both of those are up to $20,000. So again, it's just a really sweet deal for Marquette residents who are interested in doing any kind of home energy improvements, windows, furnace, insulation, anything like that with the winter coming upon us. So since the start of the program in June, we've completed almost 200 homes, home assessments, and have improvements starting in just over 60 homes. The program's expected to continue through the fall to reach our target number of homes at 550. I've handed you a packet of information and would like to enlist your help as leaders of the community. After all, this is your program. So, as you know, we are responsible for the marketing and outreach, and so we've done, you know, a lot of TV. We've basically been promoting it. We're going to continue, but I'm hoping that maybe you guys could help us a little. So in your packet, there's three case studies from South Marquette homes showing the benefits of the program to the homeowners. There's a frequently asked questions, one-pager. There's a two-page home, the loan explanation, basically, the loan program through Michigan Saves. There's a map of the program area, and then there's 15 postcards that I would love for each of you to hand to your family, friends, and neighbors in the north Marquette area. I'm also available to speak for community groups, and I know a lot of you are involved in civic organizations throughout town, so if any of them are looking for speakers, I would be happy to come talk about the program. And that's all I have. If anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay. Commissioner De Pietro?
Thank you. July 16th and 17th, we had a chance to go down to Ann Arbor, Commissioner Snyder and I, the City Assistant City Manager, and Department of Public Works, Scott Cambenzi. The seminar we attended talked about exactly what you people are doing, and they were very familiar, familiar with the Superior Watershed Partnership and how productive you people are and how productive you had been, much higher here in the city of Marquette than all of lower Michigan. So they spoke very highly of your organization, and when I mentioned that I was involved with that as a participant.
Yeah.
And I knew exactly what they were talking about and stuff like that, so it was very interesting.
Good.
You know, so it felt good to hear them talk about your organization and everything you've done and how productive you people had been with the residents.
Great.
So we just want to thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Ryan?
Just two questions. Speaking of your marketing, since you're there right now, who should they contact and how should they contact you if they're interested?
That's a great question. They can sign up and schedule their assessment online at marquettebbfm.org, and that's B-B-F-M as in Better Buildings for Michigan, or they can call our office at 228-6095, extension 15.
And just really briefly, if someone signs up, what can they expect to happen? What, how does this assessment occur?
If they, yep, if they sign up, we'll call them, schedule their assessment, and one of our contractors will come to their home. Our contractors are Home Evaluation Services and Michigan Energy Options. One of the guys will come to their house. It's about a two-to-four hour process. They do a complete comprehensive home energy audit, so they measure the entire building footprint, you know, the windows, everything. And then a couple weeks later, the contractor will come back with a final report outlining the kind of, kind of the top things that you could do to lower your energy bill.
Yeah, I think it's helpful for people to know that.
Yep. Thanks.
And Natasha, if you could remind people what the cost is for someone to do that?
Well, the cost through our program is only $50. Typically, these kind of home energy assessments range anywhere from $4 to $800. So it's a huge savings, huge.
It's a bargain.
Yep.
So, any other questions? All right, seeing none. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming and updating us. Thank you. Okay, next up, we've got a resolution for supporting the cities transforming towards sustainability. City Clerk?
Yes, Your Honor, whereas the city of Marquette supports the principles and practices of environmental and economic sustainability and annually implements a variety of projects that further sustainability, and whereas the city of Marquette has formed the Citizens' Sustainability Committee to further sustainability initiatives in the community, and whereas the city of Marquette is a member of the Great Lakes and St. Lawrence Seaway, St. Lawrence Cities Initiative, GLS LCI, and the GLS LCI has developed a sustainability program called Cities Transforming Towards Sustainability, also called Green Cities. And whereas the four main categories of the Green Cities program include, one, protect water resources in coastal areas, two, promote low-carbon energy generation and consumption, three, adopt green land use and building design, and four, encourage green economic development. And whereas the Green Cities format will assist city departments, city staff, and the Sustainability Committee in planning and tracking related sustainability initiatives, and will be useful in helping the city gain recognition for sustainability success stories and could assist in securing funding for prioritized sustainability projects. Now, therefore, the city of Marquette does resolve to participate in the Great Lakes and St. Lawrence Cities Initiative program titled Cities Transforming Towards Sustainability, also called Green Cities, dated this 30th day of July, 2012, and signed John P. Kivela, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Dave. Okay, next up, we have boards and committees. Mr. Tom Veer, if you could please meet me at the lectern.
I'll be there in one second.
That's a resolution, so we've got to get a motion and hold for it. Commissioner Snyder?
I motion that we pass the resolution.
All right, do we have support?
I'll second the motion.
All right. Any additional comments? Commissioner Snyder?
Commissioner De Pietro had referenced a meeting that we went down to in Ann Arbor about sustainability with Scott Cambenzi and Carl Zuger. It was, it was a really good conference regarding sustainability and green cities. It was quite educational. It was really great to see staff really latch onto it and want to be as sustainable as they could be, so much so to the point that they wanted to start becoming competitive with Ann Arbor and Grand Rapids and everything that they're doing, which as a Commissioner, I think is great to see. This resolution is definitely in support of that, and I'm happy to see us pass it. But I also have concerns that the resolution doesn't really have teeth, and we live in a community that sustainability is on the minds of everybody. It's practically in every third sentence we say. But I think this is a great first step, but I would love to see us as a, as a commission figure out a way that we can put teeth to sustainability.
All right, thank you. Any other comments? All in favor, say yes.
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 Opposed? All right, motion carries.
Well, we are here tonight to recognize Mr. Thomas Veer with a certificate of appreciation for volunteer effort on the Downtown Development Authority. Thank you for your hard work and dedication in serving the citizens of this community. So.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
With that, we also have a T-shirt and a City of Marquette pin for you as well. So Tom has served for many years on that board, a few as chair, I believe.
Yes.
And not only that, you've kind of put your money where your mouth is, and you've spent a lot of energy reinvesting in buildings downtown. So on behalf of the City Commission, thank you for your efforts downtown.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
Appreciate it.
One quick comment. I want to thank the Commission very much for renewing the Tiff District and renewing the DDA. I think it's very important, and I think the DDA is doing a tremendous job with what they're doing downtown. Thank you.
All right, Penny Zeller was unable to make it tonight, so we'll make sure she gets her certificate as well. And we are going to welcome a new member, Jessica Jones, from the Regional Rec Authority Ad Hoc Committee, but she was unable to attend tonight as well. So we've got one appointment. Sarah Pura, Parks and Rec Advisory Board, for term ending 1/29/15. Commissioners, Commissioner Neme?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll move that we appoint Sarah Pura to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board for a term ending January 29th, 2015.
All right, thank you. Do you have support? Commissioner Stonehouse?
I will support that motion.
Thank you. Commissioner Neme, any additional comments?
I'd just like to thank Ms. Pura for volunteering to the sister city.
All right, Commissioner Stonehouse?
Echoing the same. Thank you.
Right. Any additional comments? All in favor, say yes.
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 Opposed? All right, motion carries. Public comment. Comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Citizens may reserve time to speak on agenda items. This may result in the item being moved up on the agenda at the mayor's discretion. So again, if you'd like to speak, please give your name and physical address for the record.
Frank Jepperito, 350 East Ridge Marquette. These are my opinions. Over Fourth of July weekend, which draws millions into our economy, the McCarty's Cove bathrooms were deplorable with evidence of total neglect. A member said he'd mentioned this at your July 9th meeting, but he didn't, at least not in his closing comment. Enforcement of beachfront rules is inconsistent and keeps everyone guessing, including the lifeguards who do the best they know how. Suddenly, we're faced with restrictions in the enforcement of sketchy rules, often for infractions that have nothing to do with the drownings, which sparked this waterfront safety program. The lifeguards are concerned that you won't provide a fifth guard on busy weekends, which melds into what you were told on June 25th, that no adequate eye is being kept on picnic rocks. Just last Saturday, nobody there. When there is, some people are allowed to wade, while earlier in the season, others were ordered out of the water. Excepting the immediate picnic rocks danger zone, it's ludicrous to cite a citizen for swimming beyond the buoys because they're assuming the risks associated with the Great Lake. I don't swim out that far anyway, but others have the right, certainly seasoned swimmers. That's their right. You're also harassing beer drinkers. Alcohol has been no daytime problem on the beach for the past 20 years. Just don't allow glass bottles. Otherwise, enforce alcohol rules on a case-by-case basis, so long as they drink responsibly. This is what happens when people who set the rules aren't the ones who spend time at the beach. Jet skis are mooring just inside the buoyed area. They perform their antics outside the boundary but are ignorant to whether the northeast breeze is blowing their unhealthy fumes along the entire cove. Hundreds are irritated by the sound and the stench for the enjoyment of few. They're illegally close to the buoys, the guards call it in, and nothing happens. Please do something. People also complain that the setting isn't as serene with the buoys, the flags, and the rules. Most threatening is your continued trampling of the primary dune, which none of you has raised a finger to do anything about. People keep blazing new trails right next to well-established ones. Despite proactive warnings in the past, you've taken no initiative to prevent this imminent demise of our beach's natural beauty. Factoring all these elements, you're tarnishing the ambiance of our most prized beach, maybe one of the most prized beaches in the United States. Few of you spend much time there, so you don't know. All these warnings and unnecessary death, and still, there's nowhere near adequate coverage of picnic rocks where all this nonsense started. You just proceed on with your agendas, ignoring public surveys that reveal the majority of us love Marquette for natural factors. In other words, the beauty which gives our city its unique character.
Thank you, Mr. Veerito. Anyone else wishing to address the Commission? Okay, seeing none, we will move to the consent agenda. City Clerk, do you want to read the items?
Yes, Your Honor. Item A, approve the minutes of the July 9, 2012 Commission Meeting. Item B, approve the total bills payable in the amount of $867,234.43. Item C, appoint Mayor Kivela as the city's delegate and Mayor Protam de Pietro as the alternate to the 2012 MML Annual Meeting. Item D, authorize city staff to utilize the State of Michigan Extended Purchasing Program to purchase two police patrol vehicles. Item E, exercise the first of two option years and award a one-year contract in an amount not to exceed $3,920 at the unit prices bid for portable toilets to Stenberg Brothers Incorporated, of Gwin, Michigan, being the low bid. Award the bid for liquid calcium chloride in an amount not to exceed $10,000 at the unit prices bid to liquid calcium chloride sales of Co-Collin, Michigan, being the sole bidder meeting specifications. Item G, award the bid in an amount not to exceed $9,948 at the unit prices bid for supplying galvanized signposts to MD Solutions of Plain City, Ohio, being the low bid meeting specifications, excuse me. And item H, schedule a public hearing for August 13, 2012, to consider a commercial rehabilitation exemption certificate at 502 West Washington Street.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, it's your pleasure. Commissioner Ryan?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Commissioner Ryan makes the motion. Commissioner De Pietro supports. Commissioner Ryan, any comments?
These are all very routine items, and I move that we approve them.
Thank you. Commissioner De Pietro?
Yes, Your Honor, routine. Thank you.
Any other comments? Seeing none, all in favor, say yes.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. First, under New Business, number five, report and recommendation from the city manager regarding special assessment directive for East Avenue. City Clerk?
Yes, Your Honor. Background, on July 23rd, 2012, Andrew Gwin filed a petition for a special assessment for a sanitary sewer system for East Avenue pursuant to Chapter 40 of the city code. Upon the direction of the City Commission, the city manager will direct the city engineer to conduct an assessment pursuant to Section 40-5 and present the report to the commission at an upcoming meeting. Fiscal effect yet to be determined. Recommendation, direct the city manager to prepare a report to the City Commission involving the preliminary plans, costs, and other necessary information for a sanitary sewer system for East Avenue, alternatives as determined by the commission.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, Commissioner Ryan, or, excuse me, Neme?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that we direct the city manager to, to the City Commission involving the preliminary plans, costs, and other necessary information for a sanitary sewer system for East Avenue.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Snyder?
Support.
Thank you. Commissioner Neme, comments?
Well, citizens have petitioned for a special assessment district and certainly have a need for sewer improvements, so this is the first step in the process.
Thank you. Commissioner Snyder?
No additional comments.
Any other comments? Commissioner De Pietro?
Just want to let everybody know that this orange bird that was established in 1969 has now been causing a lot of problems with backup sewage backup and costing homeowners quite a bit in cleanup. So this year is going to be a worthy project. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Seeing no other comments, all in favor, say yes.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Number six, report and recommendation from the city manager regarding Prescott Park Playground Project. City Clerk?
Yes, Your Honor. Background, the city of Marquette's Recreation Master Plan was approved by the City Commission at its November 28th, 2011 meeting. It identifies updating Prescott Park Playground as a high priority. As a result, a planning, a public planning process has been initiated. The proposed new playground will replace obsolete equipment and enable accessibility for children with special needs. Staff has identified an $8,000 grant opportunity with the Marquette County Community Foundation that will fund the initial planning and design phase of the project. Fiscal effect, the city matching funds will not be required. City match will be satisfied through associated staff time dedicated to the project oversight. Recommendation, approve a grant application to the Marquette County Community Foundation in support of the inclusive playground design site plan at Prescott Park, alternatives as determined by the commission.
All right, Commissioners, and there's several members of the Prescott Park Advisory Committee here if you have any questions. So Commissioner Ryan?
I would like to move we approve the grant application to the Marquette County Community Foundation in support of inclusive playground design site plan at Prescott Park.
Commissioner Stonehouse beat you to it.
Second.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Ryan, support by Commissioner Stonehouse. Commissioner Ryan, any comments?
Is there anything in particular the group wanted to share with us tonight, I wonder? No?
They're shaking their heads no.
Well, I think it's a very good, I think it's a very good, I think it's a very good program. I think it's, we're basically applying for a grant application to study what can be done there and to carry out the plans that have been considered. So it's definitely a win-win situation for the city.
Thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse?
I can only say that I'm really happy that we do have groups that are willing to pursue things like this and make them happen. Thank you.
Any other comments? Commissioner De Pietro?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to, at this time, thank Nina Itner and her staff, all you people that put in all these hours and many, many days of getting all your ducks in a row, and now you're starting to see the fruit blossom a little bit. So I wish everybody good luck and keep us updated. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to thank the Prescott Park Advisory Committee because I don't know if any of the fellow Commissioners, well, I know I saw Commissioner Stonehouse there at the Outback Art Show, and there they were, man in a booth, selling mugs and T-shirts, raising money for this very cause. So you don't see a lot of our boards and committees putting in that kind of effort. So thank you. With that, yep?
I just want to comment that I did get a chance to buy four glass, milk glasses from the tent. Thank you very much for spending Saturday and Sunday there and all the hard work you people did. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no other comments, I'll call the question. All in favor, say yes.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Number seven, report and recommendation from the city manager regarding award of bid, BP 1224, Marquette Area Wastewater Treatment Facility Biosolids Storage Facility. City Clerk?
Yes, Your Honor. Background, as part of the FY 11112 budget process, the construction of a biosolid storage facility was approved by the City Commission. This, this facility is required by the MDEQ to meet the 180 days biosolids storage requirement. The Marquette Area Wastewater Treatment Advisory Board unanimously approved the recommendation to award the bid to Primo Construction at their July 19, 2012 meeting. The tabulation of eight bids is listed below in order of lowest to highest, with the lowest being Primo Construction Incorporated with a bid of $444,987. Fiscal effect, the biosolids storage project is being funded through the Marquette Area Wastewater Facility Reserve Fund. Facility Reserve Fund. As approved in the FY 1213 budget, sufficient resources exist such that no bond issue will be required for this project. Recommendation, award the bid for the construction of a biosolid storage facility at the MAWTF to Primo Construction of Marquette in an amount not to exceed $444,987, being the lowest bid and meeting specifications. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
All right, thank you. Commissioners? Commissioner Ryan?
I'd like to move we award the bid for the construction of a biosolid storage facility at the Market Area Wastewater Treatment Facility to Primo Construction in an amount not to exceed $444,987, being the lowest bid meeting specifications.
Thank you. Do we have support? Commissioner Schneider? Commissioner Ryan, any comments?
There are others who could provide a much better explanation, but this is a needed project. As part of our sewage treatment process, we do generate significant amount of biosolids, and being able to handle them in this way can actually provide some cost benefits in the future.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Schneider?
It's pretty amazing how much money we spend on this stuff, but it's definitely money that's well-spent, you know, something that we've got to take care of since I've been on the commission, been hearing Kurt talking about building this facility, and I think it's about time that we finally fund it.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse?
A question of staff. I seem to recall during the budget process that we had budgeted some more money than this. Is this coming in under budget, or is this about where we thought it would be?
The engineer's estimate was $591,000. With this bid, plus the next agenda item was construction engineering, I anticipate about the total project coming in about $500,000, which is below budget.
Thank you. It is interesting to realize, as we were talking about sustainability earlier, that this really is the ultimate sustainability. If we can't handle this product, we're not going to be sustainable in anything else, so it certainly is a good step forward for the city to be able, again, to continue to go down the road. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Seeing no other comments, all in favor, say yes.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Number eight, report and recommendation from the city manager regarding construction engineering services for the aforementioned biosolid storage facility. City Clerk?
Yes, Your Honor. Background, at the meeting of October 31, 2011, the city commission awarded a contract for engineering design services for a biosolid storage facility to North Country Engineering. North Country Engineering has completed design services with bids open on July 10, 2012. A proposal was requested from North Country Engineering for construction engineering services and was presented to the Market Area Wastewater Treatment Advisory Board. The board has reviewed the proposal and recommends amending the design contract to include construction engineering services. Fiscal effects, the biosolids storage facility project is being funded through the Market Area Wastewater Facility Reserve Fund as approved in the fiscal year 1213 budget. Recommendation, approve amendment number one to the contract with North Country Engineering Design Services for Construction Engineering Services of a biosolid storage facility at a not-to-exceed amount of $31,880. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Ryan, who's up to a?
We'll just keep it, we'll just keep it going here.
You're up to a lead, and you're going for the gold medal of motion-making.
Well, this one ties into the last one, so I, is there a gold medal, by the way? Because I'll keep going if there is.
Only Olympic week.
I would move we approve amendment number one to the contract to North Country Engineering Design Services for Construction Engineering Services of the biosolid storage facility at a cost not to exceed amount of $31,880.
Thank you. Do we have support? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Second the motion.
Thank you. Commissioner Ryan, comments?
Well, we hired these people to design it. We just agreed to spend $444,000 to build it. We should keep these people around to make sure it's built to meet that design.
Very well said. Commissioner Stonehouse?
Only my earlier comment stands.
Thank you. Additional comments? Commissioner Nimi?
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a couple of questions. I guess one is typically the layout, the staking, the building is done by the contractor. Why wasn't that included in the initial plans?
I think basically a lot of that has to do with how much soil is removed. The engineer needs to be on site to determine the cubic yards of soil, so that's what in the proposal that they're.
I get the impression from the contract, I think they're talking about coordinating with our bioengineer or something. Do we have a separate engineer for that, or?
Can't see in here where that is, but I guess the second question I have is, the building
doesn't seem that complicated. Do we really need 280 hours of a construction inspection service on a, basically a concrete shell with a roof and perhaps some doors?
I asked the same question as we worked with the engineer when I requested the proposal. There is a lot of onsite work to be, decisions to be made on suitable soil, soil removal, unit cost of how much of the soil is removed. There is a structural component of this facility is also included in this RFP. Integrated designs will be providing that inspection. It is a time and materials contract, so it's, I'll be using my judgment to, you know, limit their access to, you know, keep the cost down.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner St. Ang?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just to follow up on that, then, I guess it begs to be asked, what kind of preliminary engineering work was done as part of the design to evaluate soil's quality before we went ahead and designed a building for that location?
We had a geotech under contract. They came in and soil borings. We determined the estimated of unsuitable soils, the water table, so a lot of that was done during preliminary design.
Those costs are incorporated into the low bid for the construction of the building?
That was part of design engineering contract.
What does that mean?
The design, we had the design engineering with North Country Engineering, and as part of that contract was geotech services.
I guess I'm referring to the amount of soil that might have to be removed as part of the construction of the new building. Has that been factored into the cost?
Oh, correct, yes. Yeah, 5,600 cubic yards is estimated total amount.
I noticed in the bid it talks about environmental issues with regard to the soil. Are you, is this with regard to true environmental issues, or is that kind of a misnomer for geotechnical issues?
There is a potential of some contaminated soil, and we're working with the DEQ on that and received permission to store it on site if it's acceptable. So we anticipate storing, you know, there is a possibility of some contaminated soil.
And who monitors that for us during construction?
That'll be myself and North Country Engineering, along with the DEQ will be involved directly.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, all in favor, say yes.
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 Opposed? All right. Number nine, report and recommendation from the city manager regarding Marquette Skate Plaza funding city match. City Clerk?
Yes, Your Honor. Background, in 2006, the city commission supported the Marquette Skate Plaza Committee by pledging to match $1 from the general fund for every $2 donated, up to a total of $75,000 for the construction of the Marquette Skate Plaza. On July 11, 2011, the city commission reaffirmed this pledge and asked staff to recommend a method for recognizing in-kind contributions. The Marquette Skate Plaza Committee has submitted documentation to support the amount of funds and in-kind services donated to date and therefore requested the payment of the $75,000 that has been pledged. Payment is to be made via the Marquette County Community Foundation. City staff has verified the amounts submitted as per the attached schedule, and individual contributions were verified, and staff utilized city bid data in conjunction with the IRS method for calculating comparable value for in-kind contributions. Fiscal effect, the authorization was included in the FY 2011-2012 budget. The release of funds at this time will require the appropriation to be brought forward to the FY 2012-2013 budget. Recommendation, authorize the payment of the $75,000 city match for the Marquette Skate Plaza and to adjust the FY 2012-2013 budget accordingly. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
All right. Commissioners? Commissioner De Petro?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that we go to recommendation, authorize the payment of the $75,000 city match for the Marquette Skate Plaza and to adjust the FY 2012-2013 budget accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have support? Commissioner Nimi?
I'll second the motion, Your Honor.
Thank you. Commissioner De Petro?
Well, I believe this is probably one of another exciting evenings for Nina Itner and her staff, who had put in thousands of hours and many, many years of getting all the ducks in a row for this, and now it's finally here, so I've been with this from the day that it started, and we got bounced around quite a bit in the city property areas, but we're finally at the location I think that is a perfect fit for that area, and I want to really thank all you people that did all that hard work of getting all the ducks in a row for this project. You did an excellent job. Thank you very much. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Commissioner Nimi?
I'd just like to echo Commissioner Petro's comments. I think it, this is a good example of a citizens' group, many non-residents of the city coming together and providing a facility which will be enjoyed by the greater Marquette community, and I think our $75,000 is a wise investment.
Thank you. Commissioner Schneider?
Well, I grew up on a skateboard, and it is really great to see the city of Marquette support this, and I really appreciate the many, many hours that everybody's put into this. But I want to give a little bit more history on it, because I moved here in 96, and I remember back in 95, when I was still in high school, watching MTV, and MTV had this show that if you felt there was an injustice in your town, you could write to MTV about what it was, and they'd send you a video camera. And a gentleman here in Marquette, high school kid who was a skateboarder, being hassled by the cops, wrote to him about how much Marquette was hassling skateboarders. So I remember on the streets of California as a skateboarder, watching a documentary, a homemade documentary about Marquette and how much we were hassling skateboarders. So from then to now, it's seen quite an improvement, and I really appreciate all of the hours that everybody's put into this. It's come a really long way since then.
Thank you. Any other comments? Commissioner Ryan?
I would echo what everyone else has said, but just add to it that I was out walking today and saw construction actually going on, so that's really positive. The groundbreaking was one thing, but to see that things are actually happening out there are pretty encouraging, so we're on the way.
Well, when I got on this, Commissioner, oh, Commissioner Stonehouse?
Don't forget you're far right here. Let me add one observation, and I think might be interesting. I think you know when you've arrived as a skateboard town, when I was watching a gal skating, skateboarding on the bike path in Front of Latitudes, and then noticed that she was pushing a baby carriage. And you realize that maybe this is an activity that has become far more inbred in the community that many folks would choose to recognize. Now, Mr. Mayor, yours.
Thank you. When I got on the commission nearly six years ago, this was one of the first issues we started dealing with, and, you know, I've been supportive of it ever since, but the first couple of years, I didn't know if we would see it come to fruition because skateboarders, I knew it would be a multi-year process, and skateboarders kind of grow in and out of the trend, and my fear was that we wouldn't have people that would stick through it, whether their parents are supporters, through the whole process. There's one person that has worked their butt off to see, and that's you, Nina, so thank you. Glad to see this day come, so. Commissioner De Petro?
Thank you, Your Honor. I forgot to finish the story. I'd wanted to thank everybody that had donated, all the contractors, all the pledges from private in the public sector, and from the many families that were really committed to this project. So there's many, many nights around 2:30 when Nina would wake up and say, where am I going with this project? And tonight, hopefully, you'll be able to get some good night's sleep, so thank you all again for everything. Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay. Seeing no other comments, all in favor, say yes. Yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, report and recommendation from the city manager regarding bond issue fiscal year 2012 capital improvements. City Clerk?
Yes, Your Honor. Background, at its May 14, 2012 regular meeting, the city commission approved a notice of intent to issue bonds for public improvements approved in the FY 2012 budget. Projects approved in the FY 2012 budgets to be bonded are as follows. McClellan Avenue, $800,000 net of grants. East Washington Street, $148,000 net of grants. Wilson Street, Forest Park Drive, and Mildred Avenue, $1,093,881. Street improvements program Garfield and Mountain, $1,151,000. Mattson Park Lift Station, $243,000. Sanitary sewer lateral replacements, $202,000, and sanitary sewer slip lining, $400,000, for a total of $4,037,881. These bonds will be scheduled to mature in annual installments for 15 years. Current projections have the interest rate to average approximately 2.5% over those 15 years, although the exact rate will not be known until the bonds are actually issued. The bond closing is currently scheduled for August 23, 2012. Fiscal effect, debt service schedules will be produced at the time the bonds are issued. Average annual debt service for this bond issue is currently projected to be approximately $325,000. Recommendation, approve a resolution authorizing general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed $4,500,000 for the public capital improvements, and authorize the city clerk to sign the resolution. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Anyone? Commissioner Nimi?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that we approve a resolution authorizing general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed $4,500,000 for public capital improvements, and authorize the city clerk to sign the resolution on behalf of the city.
Thank you. Do we have support? Commissioner Ryan?
I'll support the motion.
Thank you. Commissioner Nimi?
Well, these are necessary projects, projects we've approved in the capital improvement program, and we don't have the funding to do them otherwise, so we need to borrow.
Thank you. Commissioner Ryan?
I think it would be good to have an explanation as to why we're expecting to spend 4 million and we're borrowing 4 and 1/2. I'm sure there's a good reason, and I see our finance guy is there, so.
Gary, you want to try to explain where the half a million dollars is going?
No, I don't. Thank you. Just kidding. The 4 and 1/2 million dollars is actually the original number we were working with, and ever since then, we've been tweaking it down, so the actual bond issue is going to be, we're thinking right around $4 million, but we're just trying to keep it consistent with previous resolutions that were passed, and so that's kind of why it's, the resolution states 4 and 1/2 million, but we're, as of Friday, we're tweaking the numbers, and it looks like it's going to be pretty much right at the $4 million. That's all I have. My question.
Answer is your question. Perfect. Thank you, Gary. Any other comments? Commissioner Schneider?
We're borrowing a whole lot of money, and about 3/4 of this is for street improvements, not all of which I think are necessary, although, you know, keeping up our infrastructure is really important, but something like the McClellan Street Extension, obviously, I voted that down. Having this much blacktop in our community is something that I don't think we can sustain into the long run if we're going to keep borrowing $3 million every year to keep updating it. You know, is that going to change in the next 5, 10, 20 years? Maybe not, but I definitely think it's something we need to think about in the long term because... because borrowing this much money when our general fund is only 18 million, I don't really think it makes sense in the long run to continue to borrow this kind of money for street maintenance.
Thank you. Commissioner Ryan?
I would like to say that over the last couple of years, this commission has looked very carefully at these requests, as has the staff and the city manager. And we all kind of agreed that we would borrow money at the rate we were paying it back, which is roughly $4 million a year. So we're not basically increasing our debt, we're staying at the same debt level. Having said that, we could easily be spending $8 million and probably not even come close to dealing with all the issues. I'm not sure I agree with Commissioner Schneider, however, that we should get rid of our streets because I think people enjoy living on streets and driving their bikes on blacktop and doing some other things too. So I think they like getting water delivered to their home and pipes and sewer leaving the same way. So these are all issues we have to deal with and I think we're attacking them. I think we're doing it prudently, but I think we did make a decision to keep our debt at the point where it is and I'm glad to see we're following through on that. And that started with the staff and the manager and continued with the commission in approving this budget. So that's really what we're doing here and as I say, there are many other streets that would be nice to fix, but we're doing what we can within the resources we have.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse?
I would be remiss if I didn't point out that over $800,000, nearly $900,000 is directly sustainability money in terms of sewer, sanitary sewer slip lining, lateral replacements, lift stations. Again, we go back to the baseline of what sustainability is for communities and this is it at the base level. So it's not really an issue what we're paving over, we're maintaining what we have and then taking, I think, very significant steps for the sustainability of the community in the future. Thank you.
All right. No other questions? We'll call the vote. City clerk, you want to do a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Your Honor. Mayor Burtam DePietro?
Yes.
Commissioner Neme?
Yes.
Commissioner Ryan?
Yes.
Commissioner St. Ange?
Yes.
Commissioner Schneider?
Yes.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Yes.
And Mayor Kivala?
Yes. All right. Thank you. Next up, number 11, report and recommendation from the city manager regarding network support services agreement. City clerk?
Yes, Your Honor. Background, the city commission approved $47,200 for network support services in the FY 2011, 12 and FY 12, 13 budgets. An RFP was released in June 2012 seeking proposals for supporting the city's network infrastructure and equipment. Two companies submitted proposals for support services for a one-year term according to the requirements of the RFP. Review of the proposals indicated that 906 Technologies, a local company quoted, excuse me, a local company quoted the lowest cost per hour for normal and after-hour support at $55 and $80 per hour respectively, as shown in the attached cost summary. Fiscal effect, services are provided on an as-needed basis. It is anticipated the total cost of the services for FY 2012, 13 will be considerably less than budgeted, than the budgeted amount. Recommendation authorize the city manager to sign an agreement with 906 Technologies for the network technical support services for a one-year term with option to renew for two consecutive or successive one-year terms for an amount not to exceed $16,000. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Right. Thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse?
I motion to authorize the city manager to sign an agreement with 906 Technologies for network technical support services for a one-year term with option to renew for two successive one-year terms for an amount not to exceed $16,000.
All right. Do we have support? Commissioner Schneider?
Support.
Thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse, comments?
A question for staff. Can you give us any background as to what our previous cost was for this?
Yes, our previous consultant charged $95 an hour.
So we're comparing 95 to 55 and 80 then?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So again, considerable savings on this in the technology field. I would certainly commend staff for their efforts in that regard.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Schneider, any comments?
No further comments.
Commissioner Neme?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just have a question. Is this 16,000 per year or 16,000 for the potential three years?
16,000 per year.
Per year? Okay.
Commissioner St. Ange?
Thank you, Your Honor. Was this an open solicitation or an invited solicitation?
It was advertised in the newspaper and invited.
And we only had two responses?
Mm-hmm.
Does the city have any experience working with the low bidder?
No.
No?
No, but we have check references. They do a lot of local businesses here in town.
So is this a, are we approving a one-year contract for 16, not to exceed 16,000?
Yes. And it has an op, well, the way it's written, we haven't signed an agreement, but with an option to cancel with 30 days' notice, so we wouldn't be locked into anything.
So any extensions would still have to come back to the commission?
Yes.
Thank you.
Seeing none, all in favor, say yes.
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 Closed. Motion carries. All right. Commissioner Ryan, you had asked to have a discussion on E. coli that was mentioned on the beaches.
Yes, and it's certainly not something that I'm an expert on. In fact, I know very little about it. But I do know the community has been concerned when we've had two recent incidents, one at South Beach and one at North Beach, when the beaches had to be closed because of E. coli. And I just thought if we had appropriate staff here tonight, and we do, that they could perhaps answer some of the concerns that people have and maybe let us know what's going on and what they know about what's happening and perhaps why, if they know why.
Okay. Kurt Goodman's here and I see Carl Lindquist from the Superior Watershed Partnership is here also. Maybe he could weigh in. So if you guys could come to lectern and maybe give us just a brief update of what's going on.
Thank you, commission and the public. A little brief history on the beach mining program the city performs as part of the Beach Act of 2,000 Congress-appropriate funds for communities to implement beach mining programs. There was a lot of closures way back when and part of the program courses to try and identify sources. Marquette's been very fortunate to have a pretty good track record over the 12 years that I've been involved in the program. We've taken over 2,100 samples and I can count on my hand how many advisories that we had to put up. Unfortunately, this year, we got two advisories within a week period of time. Advisory is required when the E. coli count exceeds 300 counts per 100 MLs. And one happened at South Beach July 19th and a North Beach a week later on July 26th. Lot of questions I've been getting is what is causing the exceedance? Really, that is an unknown source at this time. A lot of potential sources could be illicit sewer connections, sanitary sewer overflows, excessive stormwater. Let's see, possible, you know, the geese, the goose, the seagulls, but to really quantify exactly what has happened with the exceedance on these two instances, I cannot do that at this time. One thing in partnership with the Superior Watershed, last couple of years, we've expanded our program through the Great Lakes Restoration Initiative, received additional funding. We do monitor the stormwaters. I've done heavy rain events sampling, so there has been quite a bit of extensive looking for potential sources and nothing has really stood out. We've got some theories right now. Warm water temperatures this year, they're about five degrees higher than last year and the E. coli counts are up a little bit, but once again, we had counts that just exceeded the 300. One thing I want to point out too, that this information of all of our sampling data that goes back to 2000 is available on the, it's called the Michigan Beach Guard System. It can be linked through the Waterfront Safety Task Force. So if you go to the Waterfront Safety Task Force, you can pull up Beach Mining System and you can pull up all of the data. We enter it pretty quickly when we get our results and for someone who likes statistics, likes numbers, it's, you'll find it pretty, pretty good useful information. One thing I want to mention on our protocol to call advisory, typically what happens is I'll get a call usually around 3 o'clock, 3:30. Well, it just so happened to be last two Fridays with the exceedance and I'm required to put advisory up. I work closely with the fire department to put up the signage and then we re-sample immediately. And it does, at this time, it takes 24 hours, 22 to 24 hours to get the result and then once we get the result, if it comes out below, below the limit, the beaches reopened. We're using TV 6 and TV 10 sort of as our main news outlet, putting it in the Mining Journal, sort of a after-effect, time we would miss the deadline. Another thing that we're, in fact, just started today is it's called a rapid test for E. coli. We're one of the eight communities in the state that are participating in a pilot program with the EPA and the state to do a rapid test. This rapid test gives the results within three hours. So let's say if I got a high result at 2:00 in the afternoon, I could have the test at 5:00 and make a determination. Problem with the rapid test, it takes about eight hours. So it's very labor-intensive. Our lab tech right now is going through a process of learning. So that's a, that's a positive. And then one other component Carl talked a little bit about is what are some plans for some public education and anything I might have missed.
Kurt is absolutely right that we're looking at all the factors right now on these two closures and a big one is the warmer water temperatures throughout Lake Superior, but that's coupled with a number of other things that, you mentioned the birds, but first let's start with South Beach. That is a unique beach because it's isolated by the power plant and then the armored shoreline of South Lake Shore Boulevard's kind of isolated. And if you look at the rest of the beaches, good examples where we did the dune restoration at McCarty's Cove, that's almost a six, six to 10 inches higher than it was a year ago when we did that dune restoration because these dunes are living systems, they trap sand, they grow and move and unlike South Beach, which is isolated and it's not being nourished with new sand, there's all these processes taking place. In other words, it's relatively level and it's more damp than our other beaches, which are more in a natural state and they drain and, you know, they're dry until you're to the water's edge. So that one's more damp and which can be a breeding ground for some bacteria. Not to raise alarm, but we're looking at options there as far as grooming and grading. It's a unique beach and so that coupled with stormwater and these other factors and both these events are tied to a recent rain event, which also can raise levels of bacteria. The other one, North Beach, we were surprised at that one and he mentioned some of the things we're looking at, but another thing that I think the commission should consider is, North Beach is also known as Dog Beach. And so where the rest of the beaches is a pretty good signage as far as raising awareness about that issue. So many factors and the North Beach closure, in addition to being tied to a rain event and these other factors, it's just where you look at everything, prevailing winds that day were northeast, keeping all that water close to shore when that sample was taken. So you, there's a lot of things to look at when we get these events and that's what we're doing right now. That was about all I had to add. Well, the other thing was we're gearing up to do a large community education campaign on educating people about how their stormwater systems work and, you know, not just the outlet at the beach, but what is going to raise awareness about what's yard care and auto care and things that affect our stormwater quality, what people can do in their yard to help improve stormwater quality at the beach. So that'll be coming out here in the near future. That should help also.
Okay.
Question?
Sure. Commissioner Ryan first?
I think one of the concerns people have is, is the, is the E. coli level just under the acceptable level most of the time? I mean, you know.
Just over, yeah. So instead of 300 parts, well, the North Beach was 404 and 800 something for South Beach, wasn't it? Okay.
But I guess, you know, they're wondering, does this mean the E. coli levels are always somewhat high, but just not high enough to trigger this or not?
They're well below.
Well below?
Yeah. Historically.
That's important to know.
Commissioner DePietro?
Thank you, Your Honor. For either Kurt or Carl or both, how many other communities check their swimming areas for E. coli?
In the U.P., there's approximately 121 beaches and also, this is a volunteer program. Marquette's the only community in Marquette County that monitors its beaches. So, you know, the program typically is run by the county health departments, but, you know, Marquette sort of stepped up the plate in 2000 when the health department, you know, asked for some assistance, they didn't have the resources to assist it. But mostly, you know, most counties have it. Some are more active. Again, this is done by a grant. We receive $5,000 a year to do the testing. Does it cover our cost? Probably a little short, but it's something I think Marquette should provide to the public to be proactive.
That's what I was going with this. I know the city of Marquette's very aggressive, but that doesn't mean that those other communities don't have E. coli in their water. It's just that it's probably not being tested. So I want to thank you people for doing what you're doing as far as testing the water and I know through your investigation, you'll find out where it is occurring from. So thank you all again.
All right. Thanks for coming up, guys. All right. Next up, number 13, Commissioner Schneider, you asked to have a discussion on an artist program?
Yeah. The city of Marquette just concluded a really incredible weekend with Blueberry Fest, Art on the Rocks and the Outback all happening at the same time, including the play, The Dandelion Cottage and, you know, Fantastic Farmer's Market, one of the best attended of the year, which happens to also include a lot of artists. So making my way around the community, talking to artists both who live here and travel through here regularly for these art events, there was a lot of discussion about public art and, you know, what is the city doing for art beyond some of these committees? And one of the things that kept popping up was an artist residency program and they were wondering what the city could do about maybe sponsoring some sort of long-term artist residency. I don't really know. I don't want to try and put something together, but I was thinking that we have a really incredible arts and culture committee and I'm hoping that the rest of the commissioners would agree with me and maybe we can agree with me, and maybe we can task them to spend six months talking to some community partners, Marquette area public schools, Northern Michigan University, some of the artists that are in town, and spend the next six months kind of talking with potential community partners and kind of identifying what an artist residency program could look like. And, you know, if they come back with something that, that looks really good, then maybe we can act, act on it. But I'm hoping to gain the rest of the commission's support and giving them direction to go ahead and start talking to partners and putting something together.
Was that in the form of a motion?
Well, do we need to, do we need to create a motion to, to give a direction to one of our committees? If so, then I will motion that...
I would say so.
All right. Then I'll make a motion that we, we ask Arts and Culture Committee to spend the next six months talking to community partners and identify what an artist residency program would look like.
Do we have support? Commissioner Neme?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll second that motion.
All right. Any additional comments, Commissioner Schneider?
I think I kind of laid it all out there. I'm kind of curious to hear what the rest of the commission thinks.
Commissioner Neme?
I think Commissioner Schneider probably, like he said, he laid it out pretty well. What I would like to see, and I would hope our Arts and Culture Committee could maybe get some partners together, like we, you know, for instance Skateboard Plaza and the Coffin Sports Complex. Certainly, I think the city could, could be a supporter of some sort or facilitator, but I'd, I'd really like to see a, a community group or an arts community get behind it and, and do it, because when you, when you do things yourselves, you, you know, you, you have much more invested in it than if we just as a city start putting money toward it and, and doing it. And I think the, the end, the end product is, is much better as a result.
Commissioner Ryan?
You know, it may be a very good idea. I, I don't know. I, I guess I have a little concern with us going out and directing one committee to do one specific thing when they have a broader agenda than that. Not saying it can't be done, but, you know, I think this is also a matter of we have, we have staff that works in this area. I think bringing this to people and, and asking them to consider it is one thing. Doing it with commission direction kind of puts a whole different light on it. So I'm just kind of muddling this around in my head, to be honest with you, as to whether this is a good approach or not.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
I, I concur with Commissioner Ryan, perhaps a little, with a little bit of a different angle to it. I think it's an interesting and intriguing idea. I remember over the years discussing it with, with a couple of different groups in town, particularly Northern. It was an item of discussion when the, the caretaker's building, for example, became a surplus to the city of trying to interest Northern, looking at that as an artist and residence building. So it's been around the town a few times, and I, I think it's an interesting and intriguing program. It's, it's one that is commonly done in many locations in many cities, so it's not groundbreaking from that standpoint. However, I, I really don't think we should be directing the Arts and Culture Committee to take a lead on this. I think that it would be far more appropriate if the community groups that would see value in this would come together. And they can do that with Arts and Culture at any time, as our contribution to that, as well as Northern's DeVos Museum, for example, could be a big player, and there's a whole host of people. And then, once they, they kind of sort out what they think they could do and where they see the value on it of bringing that forward then to the commission as something, or bringing it forward officially to Arts and Culture to bring to the commission. I'm, just as a matter of, of policy, I really dislike directing things to committees from the commission level, especially a program like this that largely would need to be self-supported through various groups and activities and not simply one that the commission throws money at. So I, I would not be supportive of this in this manner. The concept I like, the way of doing it, I can support. Thank you.
Well, I will support it. And, you know, my feeling is, these boards and committees do work for us, and that's exactly why they're here. And, and we charge the Planning Commission with different tasks at times. We charge the Harbor Commission with tasks. The Prescott Isle Park Advisory Committee that was here, we've charged them with tasks. That's their role. They, they advise us, and, and that's exactly what they're there for. And I would trust those folks to make these decisions, certainly better than I could make them, and probably better to a degree than staff could make them. The people that sign up for that board have a direct interest in the arts and intimate knowledge of it in the community, and I think they're the people to, to help maybe steer this. But, you know, the, the idea of throwing money at something, I'm not a fan of that either. I don't think we need to, and I don't think that's the intention. I think the intention is to see if there's support in the community for some of these groups to step up and help, so. Commissioner Schneider, anything else?
Well, you, you kind of addressed what I was going to say, is, you know, in the two years I've been here, we've started asking boards and committees to come to us and kind of give a report on what they do. And it's always been my feeling that, that the boards and committees are essentially our advisory boards. They're, they're under us for us to be able to, to give tasks to and come back with, with more information. So for me, this is saying, you know, this is a lot of what I've heard. I've liked, I would like this committee to go out, talk to the community, find out what they can find out, and come back to us with it. So to me, it seems like the way that, that government should be flowing and working, and I'm looking forward to working with them.
Commissioner Neme?
Thank you, Your Honor. I, I agree regarding the, the committee, its purposes to advise us, and I think that if they have any interest in this or if this is practical, I think they'd appreciate our, our assignment to them to, to look at it. We're not looking at committing money at this point just to study, give us a, some sort of a, an idea about it, and, and that is their, their purpose.
Commissioner DePietro?
Thank you, Your Honor. I agreed both with Commissioner Ryan and Commissioner Stonehouse, but I'm also interested in seeing where Commissioner Schneider can go with this and a proposal, so I'll, I'll support this just to get it moving forward, so, thank you.
Any comments?
I guess, I'd just like to make it clear, I'm probably not going to support this, but I'm not against the idea. It's just the way we're going at it, so.
All right. All in favor, say yes.
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 Opposed?
No.
No.
Motion carries four, three. Saint Ange, Ryan, and Stonehouse? Were opposed, so, motion carries. That's the end of the agenda. Now, two comments city commissioners wish to bring before the meeting. Commissioner Neme? Oh, I'm sorry. Public comment. Comments should be limited to five minutes per person. Go ahead, Mr. Verito.
... Frank Verito, 350 East Ridge, Marquette, these are my opinions. For a month now, the water fountain near the Wild Rover has run at a trickle. It's unusable. This concern addresses a basic human need. Please fix it and install two more fountains, one outside the Commons and one at the new bus depot. Regarding July 4th...
Can, can you turn your mic on or make sure the mic's on?
Why is it not on, John?
It was on earlier.
May I start over, please, so it's on the record?
You may. For the record, I have been sitting here the whole time, so I didn't turn it off.
Right, yeah. I don't know. Well, I think I talked loudly enough to get on there. I don't want to blow the people out of their chairs at home, but thank you.
Go ahead. You're on the clock.
Frank Jeff Verito, 350 East Ridge, Marquette, these are my opinions. For a month now, the water fountain downtown near the Wild Rover has run at a trickle. It's unusable. This concern regards a basic human need. Please fix it and install two more fountains, one outside the Commons and one at the new bus depot. Regarding July 4th, Mr. Keevila is quoted as saying, "The city cannot intervene to stop the fireworks unless setting them off could pose a danger such as a fire hazard, and to make sure there isn't danger if they are shot off. There was not a potential fire hazard, so we could not stop them," he said, "although we did urge them not to shoot them because of the rain and lack of participation." Not mentioned was whether the city could step in if lightning was flashing almost overhead. Instead, you encourage hundreds of people to remain outside. Logically, as the untimely rain began to fall, the people in charge would quickly look up the next night's weather forecast to see if it's more conducive to fireworks than the prevailing certainty of rain. Good weather on Tuesday, which ended up being the case, would have drawn a countywide crowd back to the lower harbor. Missing from your July 9th analysis was the impact to the vendors. By the time the weather turned south on July 4th, the vendors had already earned the vast majority of that day's take. With the main shebang over, Thursday was slow despite the perfect weather. Delaying the fireworks a night would have reaped thousands of more dollars for our charities, even if we needed to house the crew in a motel for an extra night. Older people who had their hearts set on the show either couldn't bear the conditions or they figured the show was postponed. For these reasons, only three of my nine guests showed up, and two of those almost missed half. I'm not complaining for myself. The show was stupendous. Way too excellent not to be enjoyed by a maximum number of people. Come on, families don't want their children standing out in the rain. An organizer is quoted saying his group believed the storm would hold out. We at least know that the rain didn't hold out because rain already fell before the show started, and lightning was evident. In fact, people who were on hand cheered the lightning a couple of times. What's troubling is that most every other municipality in our area postponed their fireworks, and that the organizers of our show were urged not to shoot them because of rain and lack of participation. Yet they proceeded anyway when so many people had either left the park or they decided not to go at all. July 9th, you gave in to a former manager who's accused of instituting a policy to rip our city off in order to benefit himself. Truth is stranger than fiction again. It cannot be true that the judge who settled the appeal against the judgment of the previous judge is the father of the MML attorney who was appointed to represent the city in the Hoff affair. We call those public funds used literally to fight against the residents of this community. Throughout the fiasco, the father judge and the son attorney were on the side of the manager. There's an alleged conflict in that the recommendation was predetermined by virtue of the person who through some act of twisted coincidence was delegated to review the case. Our local media needs to expound upon this odd relationship, so reminiscent of a local developer and his son who planned to bid on the Blaker Street Tower. Oh, yes, and certain members of the Hartwood Committee, and how townhouses at Flounders came to block our view, you know, such as life in the land of predetermined decisions. While Mr. Keevila is commended for acknowledging what a mess the former manager made, he's denounced for playing roles on the aforementioned issues and for his alleged negligence at Pitnik Rocks two summers ago and presently. In matters of immediate public safety, there isn't time to wait for a committee's recommendations. He also took no initiative to limit heights on the roundabout as the view slowly digressed from partly to almost totally blocked. On his promotional ad, Mr. Keevila touts his ability to work with other people and that he works well with everyone, and to look at the record to see that he's very effective at that. Well, John, you chose the wrong word. You don't work well with everyone. You are personable, and you seem to work well with the subcommittees that you assemble to carry out your agendas, as well as interest groups. It's easy to work well with those who you've specially loaded onto your boards, such as two of the area's biggest developers magically appearing on the Hartwood Committee. Another irony is someone running as a Democrat who exhibits the conduct of a classic Republican. You're a little different than the Tourables and Urbies before you in that you misuse your authority and the passage of time to bowl over your opposition. You don't work well with those who oppose your agenda, and to pay money to air a commercial to boast otherwise is a disgrace against the voting public.
Thanks, Mr. Verito. Anyone else wishing to address the commission? Seeing nobody else, we'll move to commissioner comments. Commissioner Neme?
I have nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you. Commissioner Schneider?
Yeah, just a few quick comments. I'm kind of surprised sometimes how much I can stir the pot, at least, when I talk about streets or lack thereof in the future. I definitely want to, want to thank city staff for the work that they've been doing to, to maintain what we do have. And I don't want the rest of the commission to feel that I'm opposed to updating the infrastructure that we have, because there's definitely a lot of infrastructure that is far outdated and definitely needs to be, needs to be updated. So my most, mostly my concern is the long-term costs that we're going to be spending on the streets. Going over our planning commission meetings over the last few months, I've noticed that a lot of the planning commission meetings seem to go on for an extremely long time, sometimes for not that many agenda items. And since we do appoint them, and I guess in some ways they're, they're working under us and they're completely volunteer, I want to express my public concern that volunteers for the city are putting in that much time when previous commissions have generally been able to do it more efficiently. So I wanted to give recognition to that and hope that they can figure out ways to expedite some of their meetings. I also want to remind citizens that there is a primary election coming up next Tuesday, and that's really important on a number of levels. So please, no matter your persuasion, please make sure you get out and vote. Primary election makes a lot of decisions. So, yeah, please get involved, and that would be it.
Thank you. Commissioner Saint Ange?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Commissioner DePietro?
Thank you, Your Honor. I want to do some anniversary dates for city employees, such as Paul Anaretti, who is captain with the Market Fire Department and fire inspector. And August 10th, he'll have 25 years in. Marty Munger, who is a uniform sergeant, also is our K-9 dog handler. And August 8th, he'll have 20 years. And Pat Fuller, who is our Market Police Department clerical dispatcher, on August 17th will have 20 years. Mark Romero, from the Parking Rack Department, heavy equipment operator, on August 16th, he'll have 10 years. And Danny Beerman, our utility locator tech, will have 10 years. Also, I'd like to do a couple kudos for the Market Fire Department, as I like to thank firefighters, the local number 643, Phil, and Phil the Boot, coronator firefighter Brian Anderson, all the volunteers who had manned major intersections in the city of Marquette this past Friday and Saturday to help raise funds, including all the motorists and people who had walked through these intersections who stopped by to donate monies for this worthy cause. Again, we thank everybody that participated, volunteered, and stopped by to donate. I'd also like to remind everyone of the upcoming United States National Guts Frisbee Tournament that will be held next weekend on Friday, August 4th, and Saturday, August 5th, at Hurley Field in South Marquette. These Guts Frisbee fans will see some of the best players in the country playing at South Marquette Hurley Field. Everyone is welcome to attend, and no cost to the public. Also, for the American Legion baseball fans, starting this Thursday, August 2nd, the American Legion Post 44 baseball team of Marquette is hosting the state American Legion Class A, Class A championship tournament at the Gerard Haley Memorial Field in North Marquette. Everyone is invited to watch some of the best Legion players in the state of Michigan, and including some of the best Post 44 Legion players right here in Marquette. Again, come down to the North Marquette Ball Field to watch some of the best players and some of the best games you'll see at the American Legion level. And also, if I could ask, I believe it would be Scott and Bensy and/or Kurt, if they could address the mailing to market homeowners from American Water Resource of Michigan. Many people, I believe most residents, had gotten this type of letter, and they believe that it has something to do with the city of Marquette. And would someone like to address this issue?
Take a stab at it. We received a notification probably about three weeks ago that a company would be sending out a mailing to residents, so what we did is we put out a public service announcement just to kind of give the details of what we knew of the program. Basically, it's a private insurance company that's soliciting insurance on your water service for your residents. As far as the details of whether it's inside the home or not, I'm not sure. What they've covered in the mailing that they provided us with is the portion of the water service that feeds your home that you, the resident, are responsible for, and that would be the portion that's between the right-of-way line and your home. It's, like I say, similar to what I believe is out there for some of the other utilities, such as the, the gas service, where it's, it's basically just a insurance policy that you're taking out so that if you ever had to do service work on that, you would have... out, so that if you ever had to do service work on that, you would have insurance for it. It's not a city-initiated project, and it's not endorsed in any way, shape, or form by the city.
Okay, thank you. That's why I say it was very, very confusing for most of the residents receiving that type of letter, and so I just wanted you to clarify that, and appreciate that very much, and I hope the people out there watching this meeting understands and explain it to their neighbors. And then, thank you very much, Scott. I'm going to switch gears now, because as of effective date, January 1st, 2012, the state legislature of Michigan passed the fireworks bill. And a couple representatives from the UP, Mr. Hooky and Mr. McBroom, were very, very supportive of this. Well, since this law was passed, the Market Police Department's probably been responding to about 200 to 300 calls per week, and the fireworks start mostly around 9:10 at night till about 4:00 in the morning. And I don't believe everybody really understood what the House Bill number 4293 stood for. They apparently think this is a 24/7 year-round fireworks bill. But anyways, we've gotten, all the commissioners have gotten many, many complaints from residents in the city of Marquette that have to get up at 7:00 in the morning. A lot of the people firing off the fireworks are going to bed around 5:00 or 6:00 in the morning, and the people that have to get up in the morning, go to work, and get any sleep at all. So I know that the state of Michigan opened a can of worms on this, and they also realize that they didn't do this bill quite correctly. So now the ball's in our court, where the residents want us to address the fireworks bill. And with that, I was going to ask if I could pass the ball to our Chief of Police, Mike Angeli, and see what we have on the radar as far as addressing this. Mr. Mike Angeli?
Thank you, Commissioner. Yes, you're correct. On January 1st, a new bill was passed in Michigan rescinding the old law and enacting a new one, basically allowing an upgrade, if you will, in the use of fireworks to include mortars and things of that nature. And our first experience with it was this July, as was just every other community in the state of Michigan, and I will tell you that every community is suffering through the same thing that we are. The law does not allow us to regulate the sale, display, or anything like that, but does allow us to regulate the use on days other than the day before, day of, and day after a holiday, and the holidays are listed in the Act. It's not just the 4th of July. The problem we've been having is that without that restriction in our ordinance, we've had to rely on other city ordinances, specifically our noise ordinance, to try to take action against fireworks that are occurring after those three days around a holiday. And it somewhat limits what we can do and how we can respond. Our noise ordinance is broad enough, but it also is difficult in that the officers have to hear the fireworks, have to identify where they're coming from, and have to really spend some time at it before they can act. That said, we've kind of taken a, not I want to say a light approach, but a wait-and-see or a learning approach, as to see how it developed and how it worked out. And it's not, it's going the way I guess we thought it would go, and that the fireworks are still going off today. Citizens are being bothered, and we're doing what we can to try to help them out. Not everybody's been happy with how we've handled things, but with every concern we receive from a citizen, we've tried to react and address it as well as we can. We've had some internal discussion amongst ourselves as to how to proceed and what to do regarding this, and again, we've kind of been waiting to see what the feel of the community was and the council or commission before we took any further action. But I guess from this point on, though, I will ask my staff or direct my staff to take a more aggressive approach at what we do run across, and try to nail down the violators a little quicker and better than we have been, while we decide how to proceed as far as any other city ordinances.
Thank you very much. And with that, I'll ask people that got concerns about the fireworks to contact Mr. Hooky and Mr. McBroom, and let them know what your feelings are on this issue. I think that they deserve to hear from everybody, and like I say, our hands are tied. This is a house that was, a bill that was passed as of January 1st, 2012, so. Anyways, I'll turn this over to the mayor and let him address the fireworks issue. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Commissioner Ryan?
I wasn't planning on speaking about fireworks, but I think it's worth jumping on here. Obviously, it is a concern, and I think even the prime sponsor of the bill has recognized that it has produced a result that he had not intended, or at least had not expected. So hopefully, they will do something in Lansing, but this is something that we can deal with at this table, and I think we should. I believe the city of Iron Mountain has already passed an ordinance limiting fireworks to the selected holidays as outlined in the bill, and I would think we should at least consider doing that at a minimum. I think, you know, when this was passed, a lot of people thought it was the greatest thing ever. A lot of other people thought this is not a good thing, and I'm in the latter camp. I don't think this was a step forward for the state of Michigan. So, anyway. On a more positive note, and it's been mentioned here before tonight, but great things going on in the city. You know, you go back to the International Food Fest and Hiawatha Music Fest a week or so ago. Last weekend was just incredible, with Blueberry Festival and Outback Art Fair and Art on the Rocks, and it's going to continue right through Labor Day. You know, and all of these things happen because people make them happen. It takes a tremendous number of volunteers with each one of these events, and I just want to thank them all because they are just doing their part to make Marquette, I truly believe this, one of the most vibrant communities you're going to find anywhere. I know we have more activity going on than any community in the UP, and I think, you know, for communities our size, probably any community on the Great Lakes, so that's just outstanding. Speaking of Great Lakes, the other issue is this matter of E. coli. I have great faith and confidence in our staff. I think this is something they take very seriously, and I'm very happy about that. I think they also take seriously what do we do about it, and it was good to hear from Kurt Goodman tonight and from the Superior Watershed Partnership that these are issues that are being considered. You know, it's good to know to begin with that the city of Marquette is one of those cities that has stepped up. We do this, and this isn't being done at every beach in the UP or throughout Michigan, so I think that's a step forward for us. But I think we have to take a very aggressive approach. You know, beaches are just what this community is all about. This is who we are. You know, we're proud, we live on the shores of Lake Superior, and we have to do what we can to make sure that it's protected, and this is one of those areas that we certainly have to keep working on, and I'm pleased to hear that our staff is.
Thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse?
Question, if I can, to staff. I think during budget season, we were working on or looking at the potential of trying to get an upgraded toilet into McCarty's Cove. Did that make the final budget, or was that an item that we've kind of been holding in abeyance? I think searching for grant money for it.
It was dependent upon the grant money. If we were able to get any of that, Mr. Zuger has left. I don't know if he's heard back on the grant that we applied through the DNR for.
That's my point being, it is on our radar screen, trying to come up with the funding package for it.
Correct.
Thank you. Let me put on my tire hat again. It's been about two months since I went on my first little tirade on trying to get the tires removed from Mattson Wall. Those big, old, ugly, rotting truck tires that have been there for over 45 years and have not been used since. And I understand that the Harbor Advisory Committee was tasked to provide a recommendation to the Commission on it. I haven't seen that yet, my presumption being they either were not finally tasked or decided not to address the issue. But I think, given the time we've had and the fact that we've been discussing this, at least I have, for over two years with our city manager, and two years at least prior to that with the previous city manager, I would really encourage, and considering that we do have the National Waterborne Event coming here in two weeks, namely the National Linsen Regatta, that it would be thoroughly appropriate if we can find two men, one small dump truck, one 20-foot length of chain, and a bucket loader to go down and remove those eyesores once and for all. And I really ask city staff to take a good look at doing that. If the decision is made by staff to, "Look, we're not going to do it, Commissioner Stonehouse, just keep, stop yapping at us about it," then I will do so. But until then, I will try to continue to keep in front of people that this is a simple solution we can do. It removes an eyesore that this community has had for a very long time, and while granted, it's something that's only seen by folks that are enjoying the water, the boating community, in fact, it's also seen, I think, by folks that just walk along the wall and look down and say, "Why is this ugly old truck tire still sitting here?" That said, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Let's see, what was I going to talk about? Almost everything. I wasn't going to talk about truck tires. I was going to talk about the Art on the Rocks and Blueberry Fest, but that's been hit on. Great year, I milled around all of them. We've got Orta Shore coming up in a couple of weeks. That's another huge event. We've got the National Linsen Regatta, so we've got a lot of good events happening. Hopefully, the weather keeps out and holds on, so that's all I've got. City Manager?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd just like to thank the Commission for all their kind comments on support staff's been giving. You know, a lot of these events happen because of the great volunteer spirit we have in the city of Marquette, but a lot of the more mundane things about making sure the streets are clean and that the barricades are up and that we're able to keep people safe. Support those efforts, and staff works very hard to make sure that we're putting our best foot forward, and I appreciate hearing all those kind comments tonight. Other than that, we have really nothing further to add. Thank you.
All right. With that, we're adjourned.